And like to welcome everyone to the Waterloo City Council work session. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Foyce, Mrs. Klein, Mr. Amos, Mr. Schmidt, Mrs. Chuen.
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas proposed.
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. And Ms. Greco, I think we're turning it over to you to talk about proposed bicycle ordinance. So it's over to you.
I'm just going to introduce what has been going on. We have done many, many hours of research on bicycle ordinances with other communities and ourself. And Mohammed and Cody from InterCog have been working on this for many months, updating and developing, along with the attorneys, a bicycle ordinance for the city of Waterloo. This just isn't an ordinance, it's more for safety of bicyclists because it's beginning so popular on the trails and on the streets that we feel that we need some bylaws and some ordinances so people are safer and they follow what we do. Cedar Falls is working on those, Hudson has theirs already done. So we're just kind of, there was a real old ordinance for Waterloo, a bicycle one. So we're updating and bringing it to current times. So Mohammed and Cody have a PowerPoint to show that kind of explains what we're doing and the changes we're making. And we're not putting the ordinance until next week. So if there's any questions, you can contact us and we can discuss. Thanks, Mohammed.
Okay, state your name and your position and get going.
This is Mohammed Alahi, I'm a traffic engineer for the city of Waterloo. I'm trying to make this show on the screen, PowerPoint. Okay, for updating our ordinance for bicycles, we checked several resources. We also talked to some people and involved some people. We also had several people review our proposed ordinances and went through several versions. I think the first version was reviewed by clerks.
Can you speak into the microphone there?
Yeah, the first version was reviewed by clerk's office and they showed us what we needed to change. And from then on, we had several other reviews. We checked code of federal regulations, we checked code of Iowa. We looked at existing Waterloo ordinance that was about, I think it's about 50 years old or something and needed update. We reviewed some other cities' ordinances. We checked Iowa DOT's website. We reviewed the model ordinances by Iowa Bicycle Coalition. We involved some bicyclists. So asked them how this was going to affect them and how was their opinion. Traffic engineering was involved, of course, and city clerks had the first comments. Waterloo Police Department and Chris Wedlin commented our ordinance. So this is the table of contents and their definitions and the applicability of motor vehicle and traffic laws, rules for riding, alteration of serial frame number, bicycle equipment, obedience of traffic laws, place of riding, parking, signaling turns, passing, yield to persons in crosswalks. There's a section for motorists, how they are supposed to behave when they come across bicyclists and violations and subvariability. So you can see different colors here, the white ones we didn't change much. The contents, the topics in blue, we did modify, some of them slightly, some of them a lot. So our first part is definition, we defined what's a bicycle, what's a multi-use wreck trail, what's a bicycle lane, what's a parking protected bicycle lane, a bicycle way and a roadway from bicycle point of view. Again, a lot of these things are repeated, are the same in state law and federal law and even in existing city of Waterloo ordinances. Out of these, some of them, we did, we worked more and added a lot, especially the three that are highlighted here. So what's new in bicycle definition? We added a bike safety flag. If there's a bicycle that's low profile, it needs to have a bicycle flag attached to it so it can be seen for safety purposes. We also are defining electric assist bicycles. There are two types, one maxes with max speed of 20 miles per hour and one with max speed of 28 miles per hour, we define those. And we added something about people, younger people who want to ride on the street on an electric assist bike which can go up to 20 and 28 miles per hour. We are now requiring they have to be 15 years of age, not on wreck trails, but if they are in the street. And the reason was that most people at 14, they get a driver's license permit and by 15, they have some experience, what's traffic, what's a stop sign, you know, how to yield and how to make a turn. Also, we are adding bicycle way. We don't have any bicycle way in Waterloo, but this is forward thinking. A bicycle way, in some places in Europe they have it, and I don't know, maybe even in United States, it's a roadway or a trail that's set aside exclusively for bicycling. Even pedestrian are allowed and skates are allowed, just bicycles. Now where are these allowed, all these bicycles we talked about? If they are pedal-only bicycles, we allow them on all the classification of roadways. We allow pedals only are allowed everywhere. Electric assist bikes, there are two kinds, 20 miles per hour max speed and 28 mile per hour max speed. The first type has, again, a kind that the electric motor kicks in when it's needed automatically. The second kind, the bicyclist controls when to have the motor kick in and give him more power to go faster. So as you can see, pedals are allowed everywhere. The e-bicycle class one and class two, the 20 mile per hour max speed ones, are not allowed on sidewalk, of course, because they're too fast. And then class three, which is 28 miles per hour max speed, is not allowed on wreck trails and on sidewalk. Of course, for law enforcement, it's difficult to differentiate between. So if type three can show up on a wreck trail, we don't know, there's no way of noticing the difference between them. Next, that all the laws about motor vehicles apply to bicyclist, we didn't change that. And then rules for riding. Okay, these are, some of these are repeat of what's already there. They shouldn't attach themselves to another car. And they should not carry additional passengers unless the device they're carrying the passenger on has been manufactured for that purpose. And they should be able to stop safely and they should be able to maintain control of the bicycle. Out of these, there is one area that we had, we added stuff to it which was carrying a passenger or cargo on a device manufacturer for that purpose. But neither the state law or other city ordinances or even federal law, they mention any kind of meaning for manufactured. Is it manufactured in your garage? Is it manufactured by a major company? So we added, it should meet the American Society for Testing and Materials, ASTM standards. And if they're carrying a rope profile passenger on the street, not on trails, on the street, we want them, if there's like a buggy with a hidden passenger in it, we want it to have a safety, bicycle safety flag, minimum 16 inches. Then we go to alteration of serial frame number. And of course, this is actually illegal, you can't do that. Now, going to bicycle equipment, should have lights and reflectors, a white lamp in front and a red light in the back. So we are now requiring a red light, it's a little bit more stringent than state allows reflector also. We are requiring a red light to be seen through and fade away. And however, this is something we added again, exclusively for Waterloo's ordinance. Bicycles now wear body attachments which are lights. They wear white light, they can have lights on their helmets, front and back. So if they have a red light in the back, in the rear, we're saying you can do away with the reflector so you don't have to have a light in the rear. Now, all these things are going to be, you can be cited if you violate those, except in this case, the ordinance says, if you correct, if you have a bicycle without lights, you get cited. If you correct it and come back, you can, the citation can be canceled. So we give them a chance here. Again, whistles and sirens are prohibited and throughout the ordinance, we exempt the law enforcement. They can have all these. Next is obedience of traffic signals and traffic control devices, which it is in many of the existing ordinances. However, we have added here malfunctioning lights. So what happens if a bicycle gets to a set of traffic signal lights that aren't working or malfunction according to the ordinance? What are they supposed to do? So we have added that. If they, now what's a malfunctioning light? It's a light that does not change for the bicycle for two minutes or more. If they wait for two minutes or more, after yielding to all other traffic, the ordinance allows them to proceed cautiously. This is what we have added. Next would be place of riding, right where and how. This says if a bicycle's on the street with no other markings for bicyclist, they should ride, they should ride as close to the right-hand side as possible. Except, they don't have to be on the right-hand side, is when they're passing or turning left, they're making an avoidance maneuver to avoid a construction area or an accident. There's a sign that says bicycles are allowed on the left. Paral park cars. And if they have to go as far to the right as possible, there's a danger of somebody opening the door and injuring the bicyclist. So allow them to, not to be as far to the right as possible in these cases. If there's a bicycle box at the intersection, if some, if anybody doesn't know what it is, I can explain what's a bicycle box. If there is a one-way street with more than one lanes, we allow them to ride on the left. And if there's a parade or special event. Place of riding, they're allowed on the shoulders. Slow-moving bicycles are required now to be as close to the curb or side of the road as possible. Now, if they are in a bicycle lane, they should get out of the bicycle lane as, taking with safety in mind and having all, signaling all the possible signals that needed to do that. Motorists are not allowed on bicycle lanes. We didn't have this so far, bicycle lanes. We just installed some in Waterloo not too long ago. And with this ordinance, we're saying the vehicles, the cars, motor vehicles cannot ride on the bicycle lane, except if they have to make maneuvers, they have to make a right turn and or change lanes or park, they can do that. And we also allow bicycles on sidewalk. Parking signal in terms of, I haven't changed that. Passing, we have added, we have added this. This is a passing maneuver requirement for the bicyclist. Basically, we're saying if a bicyclist wants to pass a car, they can't just go from right of the car or right-hand side of the car and do whatever they want. They have to do basically what another car would do when they're passing. So passing maneuver, pass on the left, move to the left lane, return when safe and clear, you're ahead of like another car or another bicyclist. So we are here kind of giving clear instructions to the bicyclist as how they should pass. That will add to the safety. When they're passing a pedestrian or bicyclist, they should have an audible signal. And they have to yield to persons in crosswalks, we didn't change any of that. Now, we added a section just for the motorists in relationship to bicyclist. We put on a separate, its own chapter, they should yield to pedestrian, to persons in crosswalks. Now, persons in crosswalks could be pedestrians, a bicyclist, somebody who skates, any person in crosswalk, motors, which is the law. Separation from bicyclist, we have added something here which says if the roadway speed is 35 miles per hour or less, they should have a distance of more than three feet from the bicyclist.
30 or 35?
30. Yeah, 30 is where, above 30, we consider highest speed 35 and more is considered highest speed, 30 and low is considered lowest speed. And if it's more than 30 miles per hour, the distance should be five, more than five feet. Of course, the reason they didn't put that in state law is how do you measure three feet? Driver doesn't have like a measuring stick or measuring device. So for that, we kind of repeated what's also in the state law, they shouldn't drive too closely, they should keep a reasonable distance from the bicyclist when the cars are driving. So we have added, we have kept, we have added this whole section to the ordinance.
Mohammed, I'm sorry, could we go back a second on the passing? Maybe I'm, what's the audible signal?
Well, normally, they can either, if there's another person or bicyclist, they can say, "We're behind you," or if there is a special device made for that purpose, they can sound that.
Are there bells or?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
When you're on a bike trail or you're riding with a bicyclist or whatever and somebody comes up and passes, they always say, "On the left." So the bicyclist knows that there's somebody passing, if it's a pedestrian.
So they shout out, "On the left."
On the left, yes.
And they, but when they do that to a car, how is a car going to hear them?
Is there any device? It's just pedestrian bicyclists.
They can't pass cars?
No, on the cars, they don't.
Only Bat rides bicycle that fast.
Okay. Okay, so I won't worry about this bicyclist passing a car?
I'll go for it, buddy.
Okay.
Let's go faster.
Thank, I'm sorry, thank you.
And then there's a section of violations that the council will decide what citation and how much, if any, to charge to write the ticket for if they're violated. However, these violations, we added something here that parents of people under 18 should not authorize or knowingly permit those people under 18 violate the laws. They shouldn't, if they know that, they shouldn't let them pass a stop sign or pass a red light or, and the reason we added this was mainly to encourage parental education and supervision so they know, hey, if you do this, they got a ticket, me, not you. So that's about it. There's a lot more, but these are the basic changes that I presented today.
Is this what the ordinance is going to look like, the other attachment?
Yeah.
So this is the specific ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Klein?
I have a question, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
The 15-year of age being on the electric little cycle, since it's a moving vehicle, shouldn't they have some kind of permit? Shouldn't they have some training? I know you're presuming that they are at 14, but shouldn't it be required?
My own opinion, yes, because the way the laws and the ordinances are right now, a 10-year-old can take their wife, their bicycle and ride on the busiest street on 45 miles per hour. There's no law against stopping that. So yes, but we talked about it and that takes more time. What would be the training, how much going to be the permit, who's going to pay for it, who's going to administrate it? So yes, that's probably in the future revision, we could bring it to council, like if council approves that. I think some of the older ordinances had that, they required even a license plate for the cars and registration. Yeah, I agree with you, yes.
In my neighborhood, we have some real little guys on some of those electric motorcycles and they clearly do not know the rules of the road.
Yep.
I don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mohammed, following up on council member Klein, so if I'm 14 and I'm going to get a learner's permit, don't I have to take a written test? I believe I do, don't I? So we don't have, so there's nothing for a kid to have to have any kind of a written test to ride a motorbike, is that correct? Or am I misunderstanding?
Okay, a motor bicycle and an electric assisted bicycle are different.
Okay, so forget the motorbike, let's go back to electric assisted. There's no requirement for any kind of a written test or anything on a state level like there is for a 14-year-old? Well, that's something to talk to our legislators about, isn't it? Okay. And then also, you mentioned sidewalks. I was always under the understanding sidewalks, bicycles are not allowed on sidewalks.
There are a lot except in commercial district.
Oh, except commercial?
By state law and by city ordinances.
Okay. And then finally, have we checked to see, not that we need to do what they do, but how similar is our proposal to Cedar Falls? Because just like with fireworks and everything else, I think the more we're the same, I mean, you drive the same way in Waterloo, you do in Cedar Falls, it would seem like as much as we could emulate each other would be wise.
Well, we talked about it too in the committee, however, because of safety implications, we decided not to mimic other people. And if you look at the like safety record of Waterloo for traffic, we are probably, we probably have one of the safest intersections and streets in the state, according to state top 200 list of high accident locations, where Cedar Falls doesn't. So this is another safety matter. So we decided, let's do what we think is best. Then, we did consider some of the, what they're working on, some of the committee members mentioned that Cedar Falls is doing it this way, we talked about it and we thought ours was better according to what we thought, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? And Mr. Morrison, has this gone through your, aren't you on a bike subcommittee?
Ray Foyce and myself are both on the Complete Streets Advisory Committee.
Yeah, has this gone through your?
We discussed it there and we, it's going to be brought up tomorrow again.
Will you be?
And they're in favor of it, you know, the Complete Streets Advisory Committee is.
Okay. But you'll come back to the council with your recommendation from that group or?
Well, if they want us to, I, you know.
Well, I'd be glad to have that group.
Sure.
Review this as well, I would think.
Well, we have been and we will again tomorrow because it's coming to council for a vote next week, so.
Okay, good. Okay, good job. And I'm sure the leadership from InterCog and the assistance has been invaluable. Okay. Mohammed, anything else?
No, that's it, if there's any more questions.
And this is coming to us as an ordinance next week, you said?
It could come next week unless some council members have some questions and they want us to work on something else, we could postpone it. We don't want to hurry this. If there's a need for more time, we could, we could do that.
Okay. Well, good job, I know you put a lot of work into it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. Next on the agenda is update from Grow Cedar Valley. And I am assuming, Carrie Dera, do you want to kick it off? Excuse me.
I will, thank you. Carrie Dera, Grow Cedar Valley. Typically, our board chair, I don't see him walking in, would be introducing this, although he did let me know the end of last week that there also is a gaming committee meeting going on and he's chair on the gaming board. So Eric Johnson is our board chair, he's been doing an exemplary job of making sure he attends all of our events and all of our meetings. And as you can imagine, we've had several with our rebranding. And I believe in the packet, you received our updated information on many of the parts of our organization and I will have Lisa Skubel kick it off on economic development.
Good afternoon and thank you, Carrie. Good afternoon, council members, it's great to be back here talking before you. We appreciate your collaboration with us on external and existing business projects and particularly Live the Valley campaign, economic inclusion and everything surrounding talent recruitment and retention. We really appreciate it because without your collaboration, we couldn't do what we do. So it ends up being a win-win for Waterloo and the Cedar Valley. For the last five years, contral- For the last five years, Contra has been considering establishing a secondary facility in Waterloo. Over that time, the project took many forms, including different partnerships, along with city staff. Grow Cedar Valley has fielded various options for, from involved parties, and includes various sites. But it started where it began in the fall of 2014, focusing on the site in the Northeast Industrial Park. And we're glad to see that the project is coming to fruition and will be a nice addition to the Waterloo Northeast Industrial Park. The update in your packet states there are thirty-two active opportunities as of this month. Since our last update, eight of those are new project opportunities have been, have been since our update in December. We've submitted twelve prospect proposals and follow-up information to lead since December. That's not including a submission of a new proposal for a fifty-million-dollar project that we sent earlier today. The timeline, that was really super quick. I think we got it last Tuesday, and along with various city staff partners and departments, we were able to put everything together by Friday afternoon and send it out this morning. So we appreciate that collaboration, and the representative of a couple of good options for this company and the consultant. So we thank staff and the various departments for that hard work in such a short period of time. We expanded our Midwest prospecting initiative. We started in October and mentioned to you. We wanted to cover the continental U.S. as we weren't getting the leads we had hoped to within the Midwest area. The reason why we focused on the Midwest, its area, because it's a lot easier to have them understand where Iowa is, and particularly Northeast Iowa and the Waterloo, Cedar Valley area. The targeted industries, by expanding it, we still kept the targeted industries that we've been focusing on, including durable and non-durable goods, manufacturers, professional services, logistics based on set. We based our criteria, we basically, our targeted industries on these different type of companies. But in order to identify those that had the opportunity for growth, we based it solely on companies that experienced self's growth over time as a measurement of them possibly willing to expand. The goal was to, and still is, is to generate eight external leads. To date, one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine companies have been identified, and four thousand eight hundred and thirteen calls have been attempted. Now, these companies haven't expressed interest. This gets really back at the basics of beating the bushes and reaching out to these companies and identifying, one, if they have an expansion plan, two, would they consider Iowa, and three, would they consider Northeast Iowa? So they have to pass a variety of milestones before we count them as a lead or opportunity. To paint you a landscape of that competitiveness, one conference call has occurred with a company to date. One is being rescheduled due to time conflicts on the client's part. He had some family issues with one of his children, and we're hoping to get that rescheduled soon. And three, we're disqualified. One, we disqualified ourselves because the company wanted to be bought out of their current location, which was not only in another city, but also another state, and we just don't have the capacity, the cities don't, to do that. One company chose not to pursue our location and engage us with the conference call or meeting. They decided to focus in on Wisconsin to be closer to one of their customers. And one lead wanted to locate in an opportunity zone, and I brought that back with city staff, and they've been working on getting a portion of industrial property into the, into an existing opportunity zone. So if that's able to occur, then we can re-approach this company if they still have an active project. Since our last update, staff in the city of Waterloo staff has visited with ten companies to conduct existing business interviews. Primarily, those have been from January to current. And we have another batch we're working on right now and making some additional calls this spring and then this summer. What continues to be on most of Waterloo businesses' mind is accessing available talent. And most of the companies that we've called on are in the area of manufacturing, so that gives you a sense that it is on everyone's mind, not just including professional service and IT and others. We've been able to make referrals to the Waterloo Career Center, Hawkeye Community College, Homebase Iowa, and refer them to GCV's Economic Inclusion Toolkit. If you're not familiar with the toolkit, it was created by the Economic Inclusion Committee that GCVA has, and it's a resource that existing businesses can use to understand and implement best practices of companies that are currently using inclusion to onboard their workforce. And that's something that we continue to add to on a monthly basis, and now Will Frost will, you'll hear in a minute, he's in charge of that, and can give you a sense of what we're doing moving forward in that area. We, during that process, since December and our existing call, business interviews, we aided thirteen companies in areas such as of incentives, workforce assistance, land, city services, projects assistance, and other types of referrals. Through our business and retention program, we were able to immediately reach out to Ocwen's local leadership when we heard that corporate was gonna close the Waterloo operation. Because of our outreach, our BRE outreach, we already had a relationship with local leadership, and were able to offer our assistance because of this. It was a lot easier to do so. They knew us, and we knew them, so there was a sense of trust there that our interest was genuine to help them out, the leadership out, but also the employees that would be dislocated. So in collaboration with Iowa Works Rapid Response Team, we provided the Ocwen workforce with a preliminary list of companies hiring for positions needed. They had like skills that Ocwen staff has, and we also included their human resource contact information. A recent survey shared by Iowa Works, when there's a, excuse me, when there's a closure of this size, and the rapid response team is initiated, there's a survey, they ask each of the employees to fill out and help, excuse me, that helps to give Iowa Works and us and other entities an idea of what type of skill sets they are, wage rates they're willing to accept, if they wanna be, if they wanna seek retraining or go back in the workforce immediately. Seventy percent of the employees that did fill it out said that they wanted to return in the workforce immediately. Will Frost, whom you will hear from in just a minute, he'll go into detail how GCV is continuing to engage with Ocwen employees, and Will will continue to do that until the need isn't there anymore. And that's something, one of those ongoing services that we provide companies like Ocwen and their employees, and it complements what Iowa Works do. We're all working for the same goal. We found, we continue to collaborate with the Institute of Decision-Making on matching grants, on a matching grant they received last fall, and I mentioned to you at December's update, they received it from the U.S. Development Administration to establish a business retention and expansion innovation network. What we found over the last four, five months is that some areas of what IDM is working on runs parallel and complements the Cedar Valley Tech Works and Kurt Burnett project that is being done in collaboration with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And that project, the latter project, will be worked on throughout the summer, and Kurt will produce a report of, not only for the Tech Works and GCV, but also the Iowa Economic Development Authority. One thing we're able to do with IDM's list is we're able to look at it and compare and augment the list of existing businesses that our office and the City of Waterloo staff are calling on this calendar year and currently using. So with that said, we can hold off on questions at the end, and I'll, I'm sure most of you already know Will Frost, who joined us several months ago. So I'm gonna turn the mic over to him and have him give you just a quick update on some of the initiatives he has taken on since he joined our team just a few months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, everyone. And once again, thank you guys for, for supporting us and helping us grow the Cedar Valley. I'm Will Frost. If you don't know me, I'm a Waterloo native and continue to live in the area. Since I've started with Grow Cedar Valley, I've been able to participate in this, this effort of, of talent, which is not unique to Iowa. As we all know, Iowa is facing a talent shortage, and so is the Cedar Valley. But we are uniquely positioned to be able to, to help address some of those issues. One of that is the, that I've been working with this is the economic inclusion component of it all. It's not just creating a diverse community, which we have, but in creating one that is inclusive, that people want to stay and engage. So simply put, the ideal behind it is to ensure that there is a place for everyone. So if you want to participate in the economy, you can. And so we wanna make sure we do that. So we're working with area businesses, providing, providing resources, including the, like, what Lisa brought up, the inclusion toolkit, which gives best practices to our Waterloo businesses, so we can, we can be inclusive in that. In addition to that, we, we continue to participate in, in career affairs, et cetera. We have this summer social series, which is really kind of neat. It's an opportunity to reach out to interns in the area to provide a sample of life here so that if they decide that they want to, to stay here, they can. They, they kinda get them off campus and into the community a little bit better so that they can engage that way. So we have four events coming up for that. This, this year, we have, we started with a mitzvah, I guess you would say, at the Lost Island. Follow-up with a CEO panel at Mill Race, and then we have adulting one-on-one, which is a, I would say, a training class. I guess we, all of us probably could take advantage of that, but helping people who are graduating and out of school to just kinda get acclimated to what it means to be an adult, and some of those things, budgeting, employment-type things like interviews, et cetera, to help with that. We have, I mentioned the, the CEO panel, which is kinda neat in itself, is area CEOs or C-level executives giving best practices and kinda giving the tips of the pros, I guess you would say, for the entrepreneurs in the room. And then followed up with our, our farewell, farewell send-off, which is gonna be at the Cadillac, that's, what is, that's B.C. or previously Cadillac Lanes. And so that's gonna be pretty neat. Last year, we had over two hundred interns participate, and so this year, I think we're gonna do pretty good, and it's gonna be pretty popular. Like what Lisa mentioned with the Ocwen Rapid Response, that is, it's sad that a company is leaving the area and that people are displacing jobs, but it also is an opportunity if we, if we do it right. And I think we are, we are really working to do that right. We've been directly engaging with employees of Ocwen as well as with Ocwen itself, the company, and Iowa Works to help get these, these displaced workers back into the economy and working and participating. That has been, it's gonna be an ongoing thing. So we did provide initially a preliminary list of employers that we contacted, and that we were able to, to ensure that they are, in fact, hiring, and that they are looking, so we, we did a little vetting process there. We have updated that list since then. Employees are able to input their information, and they're able to get automatic updates as well, as us directly sending them out. I've also been able to forward some resumes on to, to other employers that are looking. And so as, as that continue, we will continue to provide those services and continue to provide, provide any services like that to our businesses here to help them, and then help the citizens of Waterloo. We are also working with the Urban Alliance Initiative. It's, this is a collaborative effort. Urban Alliance is part of, well, came and spoke with Future Ready Iowa. I don't know if any of you were in the room then for that, but they have a, a really unique program that they're doing in Kalamazoo, Michigan, where they, it's a two-part, there's a momentum side of it all, and then there's the urban outreach. And they're really kinda focusing on getting people re-engage into the economy who have been absent. And so we, it's gonna, they're helping us, and so they're gonna be here again in, in June, on June six, seventeen, eighteenth, and nineteenth, and we'll be participating with that. We're a core piece of that, and that initiative to, to develop something similar that will be good for Waterloo and that can work to, to benefit our residents. There's a lot that's, that we, that we're working on. There's a lot to come, including, I guess you would say, the word of the, the word of the season would be intentional. We are intentionally reaching out to, to communities that were previously, that have been previously marginalized and previously are just forgotten about, to tap into those untapped markets of talent that could also provide that, the relief that our area businesses need to, to grow and, and thrive in this area. And so, again, I do wanna thank all of you for helping us do that and helping us grow the Cedar Valley. Thank you.
I have a question.
I got a question.
Are you reaching out to organizations in Waterloo as well to let them know what job opportunities are out there?
We are.
Okay, even ones that maybe don't traditionally work through the Alliance or the Grow Cedar Valley?
So, yes, and it's kinda, it's funny that you mention that. I was, when I started here, Carrie made it very clear that this is not just, it's a community effort, that, that piece is very important. And so it gave me the freedom to be able to work with those organizations regardless of if they're members or not.
Good.
Yep.
Good. Okay.
Well, I wasn't Eric Johnson, and I'm not Wes James, but I can give reports for both of them. Wes was called out of town, and so in your packet also, you had an update on Tech Works campus and what's going on, and what I can tell you is that there's a lot more going on than what's in your packet, but a lot of it is still proprietary, and, but Wes has just been working endless hours to accommodate questions and prospecting information. So what he did want me to add, though, is the elevator, if you didn't notice it in your packet, the elevator's up and running. We will have a ribbon cutting for our elevator, and that's in thanks to the Gaming Association, Blackout County Gaming Association, too, to be able to put the elevator in there so that building is more marketable. In addition to that, you may remember that Productive Resources is a new company that's located in the third floor of Tech Works, and when they moved in, they had three employees. They now have close to thirty, and they're, they're poised to hire another twenty engineers. And they're a provider to deer, but they're, they're really growing, and we're, our hope is that they don't grow out of their space, but they, they love being there. So I just wanna wind up with a little bit, again, most of the information that you want for updates is in the packet, but from a high level, I just wanted to share, if you were part of the last time that we came to visit with you, you knew that we had our mission, vision, goals, and we had lots of organizational goals, and just a brief update on a few of those. On our, one of our goals is to enhance the communication from our organization, Grow Cedar Valley, with stakeholders, investors, and general public. That is extremely important to us. We've increased communication both internally and externally, using newsletters, social media, and traditional method, media methods. We have significantly increased engagement, not just myself, but every member of our team has made an extra effort to make sure that they're present and attending and part of what's going on in this community. One of the other goals was solidify the brand of the organization, and you're fully aware that we've rebranded. We're Grow Cedar Valley. It's been received very positively. I was in a meeting this afternoon, and I said the one thing we knew we didn't wanna do was have a wimpy rollout. We couldn't be timid about this new branding, and with the help of a lot of people, I believe we did it, we did it well, so. To develop a sustainable revenue model was another goal of ours. Our obligation is to be good stewards of the investors' dollars, including the city's dollars. So we have assembled a subcommittee that's looking into revenue, successful revenue models in other like organizations to ours that have combined both the community chamber side and economic development side together, so that, that committee's up and running. We will likely be making an announcement within the next month or two about a process that we plan on pursuing that would again be a sustainable revenue model for all of us. And then advocacy. We took a position, we have, we've assembled a subcommittee, it's called the Airport Service Working Group, and you may have, actually, the committee was pulled together to work on, and Margaret and Ray are both on the airport board with me, but the group is a subset of our organization representing the business community, because they wanted to investigate opportunities and ways to expand commercial air service in, out of the Waterloo Regional Airport, and that, if you've known it- out of the Waterloo Regional Airport, and that, if you've noticed any other communities whose airport has done something similar without the business community alongside, it just was never successful or taken seriously. So, this group was created to really support the work of the airport board and the airport director. So, they assembled for the, for the purpose of expanding the commercial air service, and then the very, within days of assembling, the airport tower radar realignment issue came up, and so this group thought, well, we may as well just dive in and take care of what, the issue that has to be taken care of first before we go on to the airport service. So, the group, along with help from the board and the director Keith Cusberry, really, they really mobilized a lot of volunteers. You may have gotten an email or four from us about taking a position and contacting your congressional representatives. And then we were in DC for the Cedar Valley Coalition trip and met with FAA about this issue, and there were eight communities across the country that were determined to go through the alignment similar to Waterloo. And I asked, I said, are we the only community that is speaking up? And he said, no, but you're the only one that showed up. And so, they kind of had to listen to us. But at the very least, whatever happens to the radar, we know that it's not a safety issue. Safety will be a premium priority regardless of where the radar is. But what we do know is that when we do realign on the airport service issue, FAA knows Waterloo, they know the Cedar Valley, they've heard loud and clear from this group of people, including all of you, and so we know that we have their attention as we move forward on other airport issues. So, we have a strong relationship with our local legislators, our state representatives, and our congressional staff and representatives, and we feel really good about that. And as always, we are here to support you and assist the city of Waterloo in any way that we can, and you've seen just a snippet of our really great team members. We've got many more back in our office, but if you have any questions at all, either of me or Lisa or Will, fire away. Well, we will be back. I know that updates are important, so, yes, Mrs. John.
I just have a question for you after this is over.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Motion adjourned.
For, thank you for all your efforts. We see you at the council meetings, we see you at meetings that are important, whether it's inclusion meetings, whether it's city business, whether it's business meetings, so we thank you for your advocacy. Motion's been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.